The regular town council meeting of Lake Clark Shores, August 8th, 2023 come to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gregory Freebold, Vice Mayor Robert Chauhub,
Yeah.
President Pro Tem Valentin Rodriguez Jr., Councilmember Robert Gonzalez,
Here.
Councilmember John Maples.
Here.
Again, we, please, um, let's have a, I'll stand, if you'd be so kind, for a moment of silence. Art Pumpian has been a longtime resident of Lake Clark Shores. He passed away just a little while ago. And I've known Art was a, an attorney in town and specialized in workman's compensation. And we just received notification a moment ago that Judge Ron Alvarez has passed away. May their memories be eternal. Thank you. Pastor Stan.
You remain standing, please. Let us look to the Lord. Out of the depths, I cry to you, Lord. Lord, hear my voice. Let your ears be attentive to my cry for mercy. If you, Lord, kept a record of sins, who could stand? But with you there is forgiveness, so that we can, with reverence, serve you. Heavenly Father, our desire is just that, that we would serve you and serve you well. I would pray that you would find us righteous and worthy in your sight, that your will would be accomplished in us and through us, for your honor and for your glory, and in thy precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Presentation, International Institute of Municipal Clerks, Certified Municipal Clerk. Award goes to Mr. Joe Labello.
Oh.
No.
Hey.
Hello. How are you doing?
I'm fantastic. How about yourself?
I'm good.
Who might you be?
I'm good. I have the opportunity to be here this evening, and I want to thank everybody for having me. My name is Renee Basel. I am the Florida Association of City Clerks Southeast District Director. I also serve as President of the Palm Beach County Municipal Clerks Association, and I'm currently the Town Clerk for the town of Gulfstream. It is with great pleasure that I appear here this evening to congratulate your city on the recent accomplishment of Emily Pearson Moore upon receiving her Certified Municipal Clerk designation. The IIMC, or International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and its partner, the Florida Association of City Clerks, are professional associations that promote continuing education and certification through university and college-based institutes. IIMC's primary goal is to actively promote the continuing education and professional development of municipal clerks through extensive education programs, certification, publications, networking across the globe, annual conferences, and research. FACC's primary goal is to actively promote the continuing education and professional development of municipal clerks in the state of Florida by partnering with Florida League of Cities, which y'all know very well, and the Florida Institute of Government to meet the ever-changing educational needs of city and town clerks and deputy clerks to improve their knowledge in areas such as public administration, law, management, elections, and many other disciplines. Currently, only 32% of the 14,755 members of the IIMC have attained the CMC. And of the 657 members of the Florida Association of City Clerks, only 34%, or 229, have reached the CMC. To achieve the Certified Municipal Clerk designation, Emily has gone through and completed the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Approved Municipal Clerk Institute Program conducted by the Florida State University in Tallahassee. This program provides 120 student instructor contact hours of in-depth courses in managerial and leadership skills, social and interpersonal concerns, and technical training needed to deal with changes taking place in government every day. The program aids municipal clerks in improving job performance and recognizes the professionalism of the municipal clerk's office. This is only the first step, though. A true professional never wants to rest on their success, but instead keep reaching higher. The Master Municipal Clerk Academy was established to further professional education of city clerks and to meet the challenges of the office. Academy members must demonstrate they have actively engaged in educational and professional participation that keeps them current with the changing events in the local government scene. Academy members seeking to earn the Master Municipal Clerk designation are required to attain 168 hours in advanced education with 80% coursework in public administration. This is quite a task, considering the daily demands of the clerk's office. But I have no doubt Emily's up to the challenge. Your clerk, our deputy clerk, your deputy, right?
Yes.
Deputy clerk is now part of an elite group of professionals in local government, a group she could not have become part of without your commitment to support her efforts. On behalf of the Florida Association of City Clerks, President, Board of Directors, and its members, the Florida Association of City Clerks Professional Education Committee, the Southeast District, and the Palm Beach County Municipal Clerks Association, we are all very proud of you, Emily. Please join me in congratulating your Town Clerk Deputy Emily Pearson Moore and the town of Lake Clark Shores on her impressive accomplishment of one of our newest Certified Municipal Clerks. Well done.
Yes. Sure.
Congratulations, Miss Ty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we can splurge a bit or something.
Good job.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Emily.
Thank you.
Well deserved. We couldn't have said it any better.
Okay.
All right, quasi-judicial proceedings. Next on the agenda is a variance request for 7114 Venetian Way. I believe that's going to be Mr. Donald Swanarsky.
And because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, I need to ask anyone who will be speaking on this variance request to please stand and be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help your God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Swanarsky.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Robert Chauhub. I am an attorney in town. Mr. Swanarsky and I have a professional relationship. Mr. Swanarsky and I have a personal relationship with my family. And so far as he does all of my tax work, and we refer each other, hopefully from pretty good business back and forth over the various years. Don't know how long he's been my CPA, but I want that to go on the record. I want you to also know, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Swanarsky about the situation on Friday when we were at the regional. And I told him I was going to declare that I had a conflict of interest. But in discussing the particulars with Mr. Labello and Mr. Scheck, you have advised me that I do not have a conflict of interest.
Yeah. The Florida law states that if you have a benefit that will inure to your personal gain, you must abstain. The conflict, if you will, that you mentioned is a friendship and business relationship. In my opinion, as the town attorney, that does not rise to the level of you receiving personal gain for voting on this matter. And therefore, I advised you that you should disclose your relationship, but that you are not legally required to abstain from voting.
Everything I said true, Mr. Swanarsky?
Yes, sir.
You want to know the funny part about this, Chip? When I discussed it with Mr. Labello, he didn't know who I was talking about. No one knows you as Chip in this.
Donald.
Donald Chip.
Yeah. Before we proceed, because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, if any of the council members who will be voting on this tonight have had any conversations outside of this public hearing regarding this matter with anyone, or if they have visited the site, they need to disclose that on the record. And Mr. Chauhub, I believe you did disclose that you had a conversation.
I did. Hearing none. With that in mind, Mr. Labello.
I think I'm going to pass this one to Charlie.
Let me just give a brief introduction. On July 19th, the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the town of Lake Clark Shores heard a request for a variance for the property, and I'm missing the address. Give me just a moment, located at 7114 Venetian Way. The variance request is an eight-foot variance. The code requires a 10-foot setback on the rear property from the property line. And the applicant is requesting an eight-foot variance, which would allow his proposed swimming pool to be built two feet from the property line. The law in Florida and our code, Chapter 125.69, states that you must have a finding of fact that certain conditions are met. And I direct your attention to your agenda packet. The last two pages of this item is the order from the Zoning Board of Adjustment. And there is their finding of fact, which addresses the four requirements of our code. After they determined that those conditions were met, they unanimously, I believe it was a four-to-zero vote,
That's correct.
voted to recommend to the town council that the town council approve the variance, granting an eight-foot variance and allowing the pool to be built two feet from the rear property line. And now the applicant can explain why that request was granted and also indicate the fact that South Florida Water Management District owns property between you and the water.
I'm going to read my parents' statement. That's okay.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Donald Chip Swanarsky. I'm a Lake Clark Shores resident for 24 years. Thank you for your consideration tonight for my variance application. My wife and I are seeking your approval for our request for relief of the rear setback requirements from 10 feet to 2 feet for the property located at 7114. Sherry was unable to attend tonight because she's not doing. Also here supporting me is my mother Ella Swanarsky at 8111 Westlake. Also want to recognize the other residents who attended the July 19th variance committee to support my application, including Jill Baker at 7300 Venetian Way, Keith Rudd at 7326 Venetian Way, Jim Moles at 7142 Venetian Way, Pete Rosy at 7200 Venetian Way, and Harry Tripp Lindell and his daughter Sydney at 7117. My home is located, or this property is located, on a small property, the rear of the property abuts 100 by 75 feet of South Florida Water Management property. South Florida Water Management property is located on the C-51 canal, the canal between I-95 and Venetian Way. As many of you know, South Florida Water Management property is non-buildable land. There's no utilities or anything. I believe it's just so they can access it. South Florida Water Management does not object to building to the property line. I've reached out to South Florida Water Management and spoken to Ken Quigley. He explained to me that South Florida Water Management does not object to the relaxation of setback rules. Matter of fact, they require no setback at all.
Is that better? Okay, I apologize.
I have included in my application an email from Mr. Quigley in preparing my application for the variance. I found a South Florida Water Management approval letter for the relaxation of setback rules for the pool at 7100 Venetian Way. I have a copy of that available. The surrounding neighbors support my endeavor. In addition to the neighbors that attended the variance committee meeting, I have a letter from Louis Gonzalez supporting my application. Louis's home is located immediately to the north of 7114 Venetian Way. He was not able to attend the variance. Other considerations for granting the variance application. The pool will enhance the property value, the tax base, and the overall neighborhood. Granting the variance would provide us with no special privileges as other neighbors. There are similar properties with pools built to the property line. They include pools at 7100 Venetian Way, 7124 Venetian Way, and 7200 Venetian Way. The pool will provide exercise, therapy, and relaxation as recommended by my doctor due to medical condition. Finally, the relaxation of the rear setback rules will no way adversely impact the town or its residents. Please consider approval of the application for these reasons. Thank you for your consideration.
Chip, I want to tell everybody, from the property line to the water line, how many feet is it?
75 feet.
And this is a true and accurate copy of the aerial of your property and how it abuts the C-51 canal?
Yes.
And the red line indicates the property line?
Yes.
So you have about 70 some odd feet from the end of the property line all the way to the water.
Correct. Correct.
Chair will entertain it. Any public comments?
Yes.
Yes, public comment.
Chair will entertain any public comments. Yes, sir. Mr. Kulkarni, come on up. Identify yourself, please.
Ashok Kulkarni, 8131 Westlake Drive. See, I've worked with various city planning departments in different areas, but Board of Adjustment, once they approve or disapprove, I never heard they transferred that to the council. Did it happen here all the time?
I'm sure I didn't understand your question.
This is here because the Board of Adjustment requested to take your decision. Am I correct?
They're recommending board, so it has to be approved at this board, but they recommended approval. So they don't make final decisions at that board.
Oh, I see. They approved it.
Yes.
They still, they decided.
Yes.
Which is very unusual. That's why I was surprised.
No problem.
Several years ago, the town changed their code. Typically, the Zoning Board of Adjustment is the Board of Final Decision, which is what you're familiar with. That's very typical. But the town changed the code so that the board hears the case and makes a recommendation to the council, and then the council either grants or denies the variance.
No, that's fine. Only one quick question.
Sure.
Maybe I might have missed. Is this pool, is it going to have screen enclosure?
No.
No screen enclosure to this?
Well, I'll let Mr. Swanarsky respond, but his head is indicating to the negative.
Right. No screen. Yeah, because it is out of Florida, because screen enclosure might have some effect. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any further public comments? We'll close the public hearing. Council comments. Mr. Maples.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor. Yeah, no, I used to, well, a couple of years back, I was the chair of the Zoning and Adjustment Board. And they do a great job, and they ask a lot of great questions in making sure that if they're granting this variance, they've done their due diligence and research to make sure that that's the case. And they gave a 4-0 vote for the pool. And looking at the documents and having that extra room, it makes sense. We're a community and family and pool, and it's your property. We want to be able to enjoy, enjoy that. And so I am for that approving this as it is. And I appreciate your due diligence and your hard work and bringing people to the variance committee and making sure that they understand that you have support for this. That's important. And I appreciate the preparation for tonight, so thank you for doing that.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Chip, if I may, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. You've got resounding yeses all the way. I do want the record to be absolutely clear that the South Florida Water Management District gave you essentially a thumbs up. From the Miller Land Survey here that we see, even where the pool is being proposed, it's still very skinny. And you're essentially having to squeeze in a pool where otherwise you wouldn't be allowed to place the pool. And this may have even dictated the sizing requirements on this. So I just want to make sure on the record and that our residents realize and understand this isn't some humongous, gargantuan pool you're building. You're essentially trying to squeeze in whatever you can there. And you do, we're very cognizant about the additional 75 feet to the water line, which is incredible. And I think that, you know, the variance board got it correct, and I think that we'll get it correct here tonight, hopefully, God willing, that there's so much room back there that this is the very reason why we have variances for this particular purpose. And I hope that with a resounding yes, you and your family and your friends, and maybe even Mr. Chauhub, will be able to enjoy your pool for the rest and relaxation. I do want to point out that the entire overture and the process that you have gone through in an effort to make this a reality has brought together your community, has brought together Venetian. I'm familiar with very many of the residents and your neighbors that you mentioned. And in and of itself, I think that the silver lining, I understand that this may have been difficult and at times somewhat frustrating and costly. One of the benefits out of it is you did bring your community together. You brought your street together, and I think, and it sounds like they're all behind you. So I think that we're ready for a vote, and you've got my vote.
Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Before you vote on the matter, you do have to, under the Towns Code 125.69, breach findings of fact that they meet the requirements for the granting of the variance. If you agree, my recommendation would be that you, in your motion, adopt the findings of fact of the Zoning Board of Adjustment so that that is part of the record in your approval.
I think I heard the motion that they approve the findings of fact as presented to the Zoning Board of Adjustment as set forth on July 19th, 2023, and adopt and incorporate their findings of fact in the motion.
So moved. Or second. Second.
I think you made that motion, Mr. Maples. There you go. How'd we do?
Great.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There we go. Boom bada bamma bada bean. Wonderful. Public hearing.
Congrats.
Unfinished business. New business. Discussion on a special magistrate for code enforcement. Mr. Labello.
Thank you. First and most importantly, this is not about our code enforcement board. We're looking into proposing having a special magistrate. Our code board, our present code board, does an excellent job. We're very grateful for their service. We're also grateful Bobby was on the board. We're grateful for all the past members on the board. We just want to have a discussion on the future and the process. Just a little bit about the process of a code board. We did survey, because I know that most cities do not use a code board anymore. 90% of Palm Beach County, which is 39 municipalities, only four are using a code board. And of those four, out of the 39, two of them have a special magistrate and a code board. And believe it or not, how difficult this job has become, one of those cities that has both requires the board members to be licensed attorneys, all the members to be licensed attorneys, to be a code board member. So the vast majority is going towards a special magistrate if they're not there. It's very difficult to be a code board member, as I stated, because you have to know about equal protection under the law, you have to know about due process. I did go over pros and cons in my memo here. There's about 10 of them. I'll just briefly go over them. One is you have to train, you have to be trained in the application of a law, and that's what an attorney is or a judge. Most special magistrates are actually municipal attorneys of other cities, but they have to be independent of this town, so Charlie cannot be the magistrate.
Correct.
But they're mostly very familiar with municipal law. So you only have to train one special magistrate instead of training a board of seven people on municipal law. Usually, there's, obviously, there's only one person, and that person has meetings during the day. So we don't have meetings at night. We'll save on overtime on staff. We believe that decisions are more consistent because they're done by one person. And most importantly, the person is independent. It's totally independent. They most likely won't live in town. They'll be independent of any of the rulings. So we'll have, not that this town has had a lot, but you can have appeals to these rulings, and they can go to court. So we don't want to have that problem in the future. So the job has just become more difficult, and most municipalities have looked into that. And 90% of them have already gone to a special magistrate. So what I'm asking for tonight is just basically a nod or consensus to say, let's look into changing the code. And Charlie, the town attorney, will look into actually what we have to do. We didn't do that, of course. And what do we need to do? And it will probably take months to change. But that's what I'm looking for, because of your discussion. I did meet with, and a couple are in the audience, with, meet or had a phone conversation with all the code board members to explain this to them, so it wasn't a surprise to them. And obviously, there is a letter from the board chair, Paul, in your packet. So I'm here for any questions.
Any questions from the public? Come right on up. Good evening, Mr. Sanchez.
How you doing? I'm Gerard Sanchez, Vice Chair of the Code Enforcement Board. I'm at 8360 Westlake Drive. And I've enjoyed serving the board. Actually, I was asked to be on the board by some of the members of this council and everything else. And just wanted to bring up, I think many of the councilmen that have served in the past have actually served on the code enforcement first and was a springboard for being on town council, which I know you've served on the zone boarding code, or, you know.
Zoning Board and Adjustment.
Zone Board and Adjustment. But I think it's a perfect springboard for any of our residents that would like to serve on the town council, that it really gives good
Experience.
Practice, experience with town government. Also, because of being involved in the code enforcement board, I was also getting to know the rest, including our chief, our former code enforcement officer, and now we have Eric. I have a much better understanding. And I think any of us that served on the code board has a much better understanding of how the town is running once you're in this and having to face citizens. But it's also your peers. And I understand the reasons for a special magistrate make perfect sense. But you said it right there, probably going to be someone outside the town. I think there's a big difference when one lives outside the town versus one who lives in the town. I think also it's a volunteer meeting. I don't know where the savings is going to be, because since it's all volunteer. Now, you're saying there's not going to be. And overtime, you can do it during. meeting. I don't know where the savings is going to be because since it's all volunteer, now you're saying there's not going to be an overtime. You can do it during the daytime. Well, I think a lot of our residents are working during the day. We're actually kind of more convenient in the evening, but if you're going to make in the daytime, we're still paying for magistrate. You're still paying for same people involved. So I don't know about savings. So I'm really curious what what that's going to look like. Number two, you have, Paul Hughes, you have the letter from him. Do you need me to read it aloud? You guys have it because.
We have it often.
It's in the packet.
And one thing you had mentioned, four towns have code enforcement, really two of which there's only. Which are those towns, if you don't mind me asking?
Yes, it's in the memo. The the four municipalities is the town of Palm Beach, the the city of Delray Beach, the city of Riviera Beach, and I believe it's the town of Lake, I don't know if it's a town or city, but I think it's the town of South Palm Beach. Those are the four other cities.
Well, the town of Palm Beach, be it five hundred or be fifty million, I I kind of like how that that city or town looks like, and they have a code enforcement board of of their peers. I, ever since I've lived here, the reputation that this town has, not only in our county, but outside of this county is impeccable, and I think it's having residents that are involved in in the code enforcement board and in other boards as well, that makes a bring uniqueness. Also, perfect example, we had a situation, boat trailers that were coming to the code enforcement board in a situation that we could then bring up the 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 problem or what we were incurring to the town council. So I think having a code enforcement board of residents, you're more in tune and in touch with the residents. But I I think you taking that away, you're taking more things away from the residents to have a say. I agree, it'd be great to have attorneys because Bobby Gonzalez served on our board, and it was invaluable having his involved on the board. And and obviously, it's nice having other areas. But we do currently have someone on our board who works for another town in their code enforcement board, has all that practice. So there's a lot of expertise and and eyes that we get, you know, from elsewhere. I just want to maintain what we have here. Obviously, I respect our our town council because many of them have served on a code enforcement board. I think they will vote, you know, what's true to their heart and what they feel is best for this community, and I respect all of you that are serving now. And just, I'd really like to look into the cost approach in regards to it because I don't, I'm not seeing much of a difference. So and I think our residents, you know, it's it's a tough job to do it, but I think we will have a little bit more mercy with our residents or understanding than a special magistrate that's someone who's outside completely. And, you know, you just say, they still can bring up appeal and go to the town council. So I think our goal is to try to avoid that as much as possible and just have our residents just be in compliance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you.
Mr. Daughtry.
Tim Daughtry, fourteen-ten Keller Road. I have over twenty years of experience in code enforcement and architectural review. Over ten years on the code enforcement board here. I'm not presently a member of the code enforcement board. I would be opposed to a magistrate, okay? I see how they work all over the county. I've had lots of discussions with people in various municipalities about them. Specifically, long and involved conversations about the magistrate and how the magistrate handles cases in Lake Worth Beach. And I find the magistrate, especially in Lake Worth Beach, to be very, very, very heavy-handed. Mr. Sanchez mentioned the fact that we could be a lot more accommodating as neighbors and by being neighborly magistrate from outside the area, I think misses what is great about Lake Clark Shores, okay? And they tend to cost people a lot of money, a whole lot of money. And I've seen it time and time and time, specifically in Lake Worth Beach. I know have known of several cases there that it's cost a lot of people a lot of money. I think unnecessarily with invalid cases. I consider this another expense we do not need to undertake at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Daughtry. Any other public comments? Counsel comments, Mr. Maples.
Joe, several times, thank you, residents, for speaking. Really helpful and insightful to hear your your feedback. It was mentioned costs and what that would look like on this town. Just at first, and then we could talk a little bit about, as you said, a springboard to council and being connected to this town and the community. But from a cost perspective, just purely cost, what does that look like? And then also, is this something where what's the next step if they felt like, hey, this is overbearing, this is costly? Obviously, the council come back and change code, but is there the magistrate, what do they go to go, like, what's the next step arbitration? Like, what happens next if you know, there's a disagreement there from a resolution standpoint? So cost resolution, what's next for this town, and what does that leave us?
Good questions.
The appeal process does not change. It's still the same. The code enforcement board and or the magistrate are final decision makers. And an appeal from either the code enforcement board or from the magistrate is to the circuit court.
So there's no difference.
There's no difference.
There's no difference in that part.
The the one thing I would caution is that fifty years ago, the Florida Constitution was amended to abolish municipal courts. Prior to that, we had municipal judges who heard all kinds of cases. The magistrate, if you choose to go that route, needs to be used strictly for the same cases that the code enforcement board hears, not have his response or her responsibilities expanded because we do not want someone to challenge us on the basis of conflict with the Constitution and and in fact, having a municipal court rather than a magistrate to hear code enforcement cases.
Mr. Maples, this is just for discussion purposes, but I asked the same question of Mr. LaBello. So I suggest we circle back with Mr. LaBello and let him put his pencil to paper. Also talked with Mr. Sanchez before the meeting tonight. And I think that one of the concerns is is that we can recoup the cost of the special magistrate and the decisions made by the special magistrate should, in fact, there be a violation.
That is correct.
Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
But please give give some time to Mr. Maples and the rest of the council to discuss their particular concerns. But this is only for discussion purposes. It's just basically trying to get our nose under the tent, so to speak, so we can figure out how's the best way to go for Lake Clark. No decision is going to be made tonight whatsoever. It's just basically, hi, how you doing tonight? Just introductory. Mr. Gonzalez.
Hi, how you doing tonight? An outsider as a magistrate? When you first think about it, I'll be honest with you. I had a very nice time on on code enforcement. And I got to know some of my community and Jerry, Jerry, if I may call you Jerry on the record. You know, it's something that we hold very near and dear to our heart, and nobody likes change. That's the simple reality. And I've really given this a lot of thought of of, well, what happens? What if? First of all, if it were to pass, if it were to be a reality that Lake Clark Shores has in their future, our future, it it's certainly something that if it doesn't work, Charlie, if you can please clarify for me at least, it is something that we can always go back to the board.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
And, you know, I'll I'll get into some of the pros in a second, but you know, one of the concerns is that it may or may not be somebody from outside, but what that does do is it also that's a kind of a knife that cuts both ways. And we look at it from a perspective that, sure, it holds residents accountable, but it also holds Lake Clark Shores accountable as well. It holds us accountable. It holds code enforcement accountable, and if certain processes and procedures aren't followed, you have this third disinterested person that says, no, the process wasn't followed correctly. You know, and and that gives us a little bit more due process protection. It it does have some some legitimacy. And it also takes away the the neighbor-on-neighbor decision-making that that is somewhat and sometimes part of what you have in the back of your head because you're placing yourself in their shoes, and and that is a beautiful thing. That is a wonderful thing that our residents provide currently for for the board to say, hey, what if I was in that person's shoes? I need a little more time. I need a little bit extra. And and that's and and I'm not exactly sure how a special magistrate would be able to take that into consideration. You know, that's that's certainly a concern for me. One of the benefits, I think, that by implementing a special magistrate, and I'm just, you know, we're all talking out loud, hello, hey, how you doing? So none of this, I hope, is binding in the future. I'm just kind of talking it out loud and sharing where my head's at because this is the only opportunity that I can actually say these comments to any of my fellow councilmen. Is it's not that it puts additional pressure on our code, but our code is quite old, and we saw what happened with kind of the the trailer ordinance update. And, you know, there are certainly codes that do need to be updated because either they just don't work, they're not efficient, they might not be fair. Or they're just that kind of outdated, you know, I can think of cybersecurity and and other different things. But I think that by having a special magistrate, we get that bird's eye view to say, I don't care what the politics are. This is should be black and white. And that's one of the benefits, I think, that we get with a with a special magistrate. We heard and we talked about cost, and, you know, we're, we don't have a a blank checkbook to just go out and 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 write things down. So I do want to see, you know, and and I think the big question here is, what is that overtime pay versus how much is this magistrate going to cost us, right? And so I think that that's that's important to to talk about. And and to just address the timing of it, code enforcement is a little bit different than town council. Town council would be extremely unfair to have it at, I don't know, ten AM in the morning. People are working. People are trying to be productive in in life. And and so code enforcement, I think, would be a little bit different because they these are unique, isolated events with, you know, kind of more one-on-one. So I think that that builds a little bit of an opportunity for it to be look at these cases on an individual basis and not be rushed by the time constraints of it being late. Took a couple of notes here, so I just want to make sure. One of the things that our current town, our our town code enforcement does is, as Jerry spoke about it, it almost acts as like a feeder or or a training program in order to test our residents appetite or or likelihood of of maybe going further on, you know, I I like the process. I I like being in 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 front of residents and really trying to work on on issues, things that that bug us or things that are maybe not working right. So for me, that's kind of one of the big reasons why, you know, I'm now sitting up here, and and I'm very thankful, and I want to make sure that we make the right decision. At the same time, and Jerry, I think the the opposite side of it is that may actually create an opportunity for us as a town council to create other committees or maybe other boards that will improve and beautify our neighborhood. I know years ago, we had a a garden club or a garden committee, and unfortunately, COVID kind of decimated a lot of that, and and I would like to to go back to that. But I know I'm having a lot of different conversations at the same time, and this is just kind of brainstorming. So this is, you know, Joe, I want to, I want to be able to say, hey, I'd like to try something. You know, it's worth a try, but certainly within parameters. And, you know, you seem to have a lot of experience in the area, and I, from our discussions, I understand that that many of the cities have this, are going to this, have gone to this, and that Juno does it, and you feel very confident. So I'm weighing the options, and certainly we need to see what what that final thing looks like.
Thank you.
We'll do some more due diligence and look into it. Maybe have an opportunity to talk to one of the magistrates and see how they feel. And also have an opportunity to talk to our code people and the past code people to see their take on it. I know I did, and I encourage every other member of the council to do likewise.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't know if you were done or not, but there's a comment.
Oh, I'm looking to you to see if there's comments. Talk to us.
Yeah, so there's.
Miss Certified Municipal Deputy Clerk.
There is a written comment online by Kathleen Boot. She says, on days there are code meetings, couldn't the staff come in late those days to not incur overtime?
I'm not going to answer that question. I think that's administrative issue. I'll leave that to Mr. LaBello to quite possibly loop into that and capture the concerns of us, three council members, and please incorporate the the thought process of the resident when you come back to us. Put it on the agenda next month and give Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Freebowl the opportunity to, I'd like to hear what they have to say. And again, I encourage everyone to reach out to Lake Clark Shores Code Enforcement Personnel. Anything else? Yes, Mr. LaBello.
Can I use some resources from the town attorney to see how we would change the code? Okay.
Why not?
Thank you.
That's why, that's why we have it.
Thank you.
Is that okay with everybody else? Yes?
So moved.
Yeah, let it be written, let it be done. We have no public hearing. We have no unfinished business. No verbal questions. We're okay. Status reports. Chief, I'll look to you first. I thought you just addressed it. I'm sorry. Mr. Daughtry, come on up. Come on up. Tim, thanks for bringing it to my attention. I'm sorry.
There's just four of you up there. Tim Daughtry, fourteen-ten Keller Road. Three, four.
Thank you.
So in preparation for our budget meeting next month.
Thank you.
I want to pass that along.
I'd like to identify what Mr. Daughtry has handed to us as an article excerpt from the Palm Beach Post entitled PVC Cuts Property Tax Rate by Five Percent.
Dated July seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
I don't I don't know how many of y'all still get the newspaper, but I do. So anyway. And they do a pretty good job about local news and everything else. My concern with our proposed budget is there's still no cut. Okay, and I'm concerned about that. And I'm concerned about the creep since two thousand eight in this town and expenses that we have incurred on a yearly basis under our budget. Specifically, I've seen an increase in manpower significantly. I've seen an increase of expenses in vehicles. Okay, and when I ran for town council, that was one of the big things that came out of a lot of people's conversations with me was vehicles and the cost of our vehicles. And why do we have to have so many big SUVs running around in our camp? And oral drive Tahos, seriously, it doesn't work for me. It doesn't. We're a town of a little over sixteen hundred housing units, a little over fifty-five hundred residents. We're a small town. Okay, we need maybe dial it back. We need to watch in our dollars. We have some big expenses that we're going to be undertaking over the next several years. And we need to watch every dollar we're we're spending. And our residents deserve a break, a tax break. We have not had a tax break, and there's been a huge run up in the value of properties in this town. It's time, it's long past time that we make a significant give back to our residents on the property tax rate. Haven't done really dived into the budget hugely, but I will do it before our budget meeting. I saw a 5% increase for employees. I would propose, no, not 5%, 3% is what was the increase last month. We're giving them 5%. So we're giving them a 2% as of what the rate was last month increase. Okay. Again, I go back to the fact that we're just, we're spending too much, we're spending too much, we're spending too much. There's creep here. And we just talking about putting a magistrate, hiring a magistrate. We hired a full time code enforcement officer in the last six months with the car. Okay, these are expenses. Okay, these are hard expenses each one of our residents are having to pay. Okay, we need to go on a diet. We need to go on a diet. Now, next thing I would like to talk about, and I brought this up before, and I'll bring it up again, and I'm going to continue to bring it up. Okay. And I continue to see things in my social media and everything else. And it's about how we're treating our laws. Okay, and Minnesota is giving grants to individual houses to promote natural ground covers for found, promote bees. We have a problem. We have a problem with bees in this country. Okay, they're just decimated, and they're decimated because of the amount of herbicides we're throwing on our lawns and the fertilizers. Well, not so much the fertilizers. We need to understand that we have an impaired lake. Okay, we need to get strong about how we treat our lawns in this community. Okay? What we put in our community is directly going into the lake, which is already impaired. And from that lake, it's going right out C 51 and the canals and whatever, and out through the drainage canal right into the intercoastal. This is damaging our environment. We have one world to live in, and it's time that we take a stand and make sure that we're doing the right things for our environment, for our children, and for our children's children. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doctor.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments, audience comments? Okay. Anything else, Ms. Emily?
No.
Okay. Status reports, chief.
Thank you, sir. The police department responded to 465 calls for service.
A little bit louder. I can't hear you.
The police department responded to 465 calls for service. Our average response time on emergencies was three, three and a half minutes. We assisted Palm Springs with 11 calls for service. They had another triple homicide. We assisted them on the triple homicide. We had five arrests last month, fleeing and eluding, resisting possession of ammo by convicted felon, a couple DUIs and some trespass disturbance arrest. Traffic. We did 292 traffic stops for the month. We wrote 242 citations. Thirty eight of those were criminal violations. We issued about 40 written warnings. Our flock camera systems check 134,410 tags, and that's through our seven camera system. We had about 15 hits on individuals, a couple stolen cars, sex offenders that may be driving through suspended license and stolen tags that kind of gives you an idea of what we've been picking up with the tags. We finished training with the FBI on an active shooter, which I was very happy. We were the only municipality that was was able to train with the FBI in the active shooter.
Saw that on your report. Congratulations.
Thank you. Let's see, Lieutenant Fisher and my administrative assistant attended FDLE workshop on officer employment certification, the state process that we have to go through. Code enforcement officer issued 80 code violations, 245 re inspections were conducted, and 10 cases were assigned to the code enforcement board. Lieutenant Fisher is working with the freshwater and game. We're going to update our canals with the proper signage, have them larger and newer ones. And then I gave you some information. We had complaints from people on Palm Drive and Clark Road referenced through traffic cutting through. So I gave you information where we installed some new signs. We installed a speed radar data information sign. And I also moved one of the LPR cameras at the end, so we can pick up the vehicles coming in to get a database. We, a lot of thank yous, people calling, stopping me and thanking the town and the police department for falling through. I gave you pictures of the locations where they were placed and where the LPR camera was moved. And the reason why I moved the camera down at the bottom, so we can get both streets coming in instead of putting it on one street. So if you have any questions.
Mr. Maples, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Gonzalez.
Chief, thank you to you and your staff, and appreciate the hard work that you guys continue to do. I'm gonna leave it there for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, chief. No comments.
Chief, just keep up, keep writing those tickets. Public safety, public safety, public safety. All right. Mr. Scheck.
My report is included in your agenda packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, counsel? Mr. Labello.
Okay, first, I want to start off with the mayor was actually here before the meeting. He just felt ill, so he went home. Just wanted to make sure you you knew that for the record. Little bit of business, we would like to open accounts in Seacoast. As you know, our current operating account is being purchased by a credit union, so we have to remove our funds because they will not be protected by the state. So we need a motion, I believe, to pass this resolution. It's a bank resolution. It's not our resolution, but it's a formality where I need a motion to open and approve of the Seacoast resolution.
So moved.
Correct.
Second. So got it. All those are favorites, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What else do you need, Mr. Labello?
Okay, just go over the staff report real quick. Next month, we have two meetings because of the budget on our normal Tuesday, which is on the 12th, and we have a Wednesday meeting on the 27th. So just please note that. Events are coming up. We got next Friday, we have a movie at the Pavilion right there at 7:00 PM on the 18th. We have the lake cleanup on the 23rd of September at 8:00 AM at the boat ramp. We were already talking about, and as you can see, Halloween is everywhere. We're going to have a Halloween event on October 27th to 5:30. It's going to be a food truck event. And but before that, I want to make sure you all know it's getting to be the height of hurricane season. This next month will be the height of it. So you have to prepare. Ninety percent of the storms and the severe storms happen at the end of August and the beginning of September. So please be aware, protect. We're here to help. If you have any questions about securing your property or your valuables, give us a call. Pine Tree Bridge, still waiting on the state on one funding agreement. The pickleball courts, we're still having getting quotes on the lighting. I might, I'm going to ask you from assistance on that, but let me skip the lighting and go to the rest of the report. The traffic and the calming study is going well. We're going to get a draft by our traffic engineer pretty soon this month, and we'll go over it. We'll have a public meeting, and we'll have the traffic engineer here in the audience where you can take, he'll take questions. The education on what I call the trailer ordinance is going well. Everybody has to be in compliance on the 28th of this month, which is the end of this month. And my goal is for you not to get to the code board or the special magistrate is to solve them before you get there. So if you have any issues, again, staff is here to help you. We don't look at as a positive to get to the code board. We want to solve them. When you get a notice of violation, please treat it seriously and work on them. You don't need to go to the code board. The Arabian Wall repair going really slow. We finally got three bids. We're working with the insurance company. But I'm again, let me put that on hold because I might want to ask you to, an option on that. Electronic permitting, everybody should know by now, you can get your building permit right online, 24/7, anywhere in the world, on the internet. Just go onto our website and get a permit right online. Annexation of the Edgewater Park going really well. We had a meeting with the county. It was very fruitful. And they, we basically had to do a draft in a local agreement with a lot of exhibits. Emily, thank you. She completed most of the work, and she did a fine job. It's now at the county level. They're reviewing it. It's a preliminary review. The town attorney did review it already. So what the process is, it will be reviewed by the county. They will give us our initial blessing. We will schedule a meeting. We will actually send a notice to the 90 or so residents in that 32 acres. And we will have a meeting on that in a local agreement. If you vote yes, it goes to the county, goes to the Board of County Commissioners. If that takes about two months to get on their agenda, but if they vote yes, that 32 acres, that's right in the middle of our town, will be annexed in our town. All right, so let's go back to the pickleball court lighting and the Arabian Wall entrance. This, this problem I'm having with the $10,000 for formal bids is coming up again and again and again. It's it's hard to get formal bids. And it's a seal, what we're talking about is a sealed bid. You have to actually advertise. They have to fill out 30 pages of documents to get a sealed bid. No one wants to do that for $10,000 or $20,000 job anymore. So we're going to ask you to increase that. But before that, we'd like you to waive it on these two items, which would be, you'd need a motion, because you would have to, I cannot do this. It would have to be a board motion to say it's not advantageous to get go through the formal bidding process for the pickleball lighting and for the repair of the Arabian Wall entrance.
Now, the the pickleball lighting.
Yes.
I just, I don't know what that that cost is. I didn't see it.
We don't, we don't even have an official quote yet. I can tell you what we're doing. We're going to FPNL, because they have a program where you actually rent polls. So we're going to see if that's cost efficient. It might not be. It might be too expensive per month, or we're asking for a change order price on our current contractor, and we're asking other vendors to bid on it. And soon as we get, we do our due diligence, and we feel it's a good price in this market, I'd like to just award it, not go out for a formal bid. We actually did go out for a formal bid. Emily, correct me, because this was before I was here. And we tried to get a formal bid on the lighting for pickleball, and nobody actually bid on it. That was before I got here. So it's
We would have had a pickleball court with no lights.
We still don't, we still have a pickleball being constructed where I need to put conduit in, and I need to start working on the infrastructure right now. So
Sounds like you're in a real pickle.
I'm in a real pickle. So I'd like to waive these, it's only the process, correct? Is that motion okay, Charlie? So just like to have a, propose a motion that you waive the formal bidding process on those two projects.
Mr. Maples, Mr. Gonzalez, your thoughts?
And so currently, it's at 10,000. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you're estimating that the lighting separate issue is going to cost more than 10,000?
Yes. Yes, unless unless we go for the rental. And but let's say the rental's 2,000 a month. That's 20, that wouldn't be, you know, even 1,500. That would be too much. Because we're looking at a ballpark figure of maybe $30,000 for the lighting. So you have, you have to do the math and see which one's the better deal.
Excuse me, Mr. Maples, you mean to tell me what we went out for bid on the pickleball court and no lights were included?
I believe it was included in the the first proposal. Emily, you'll correct me, and no one bid on the project. We took the lighting out, and then people bid on the project. Is that correct?
Yes, it is correct.
I'm sorry, Mr. Maples, didn't mean to interrupt you. Just stuck me is odd.
Yeah, so we we believe we're going to get a change order proposal from the current contractor. He's mobilized. Hopefully, he's going to give us a price in writing. And we're also asking other vendors to give us prices, and we're working with FPNL on a rental.
And then have we I know we secured grant money for this pickleball court, and
Yes.
majority of this is being paid by that.
Well, all of it's going to be paid by the CRA, the remaining balance. We did, thank you for bringing that up, John. We did secure $112,000, $112,500 from the state for the pickleball court. The contract was about $160,000, so the vast majority of it is being paid by a grant, but the lighting would be paid by the CRA.
Thank you for that clarity. And then the money in the CRA is already sitting there for such projects.
Yes, it's it's very appropriate to use this, the CR money for this.
Okay, and then just moving forward, neither here nor there on this particular issue, but just curious, what number do you see needing this type of waiving the bidding process? I'm not a big fan of that. I I'm really
It's not waiving the bidding process. It's just taking the formal bid process. I'm still going to get informal bids, we call it. We're still going to get three quotes, four quotes. I I reached out for the wall to 10 GCs, general contractors and vendors. We're still going to go through that process. I have fiduciary responsibility to get the best price. But I actually think it costs more money when you put those obligations on a vendor on such a small project, because they don't, you're losing a part of the audience because they don't want to bid on it. And secondly, they're actually charging you more because they have to go through the hassle of filling out a formal bid. So on these small projects, Charlie and I were thinking maybe a $50,000, some, something like that. Yeah. Believe it or not, some cities are at a half a million at this time. They were, they're at hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think that's I'm not going to make fun of other cities. I think that's high, but I think 50,000 is a good number that you would you would want to fill out a formal bid document after 50,000.
But that's a conversation for another day.
It's a conversation for another day. I'm I'm just asking you to waive it on these two items where I've already got four bids. And just so you know, even, we might get paid by insurance on the Arabian Wall, but I still have to follow our policies and procedures, even though I might get reimbursed the money. So I still have to follow the policies and procedures of the town, even though I might get reimbursed by insurance.
Okay, and then what's the expected cost of the Arabian Wall?
Yeah, no, no problem. We actually did give you some quotes on that. We got three quotes in front of you. I I think they're 26 to 30,000. But but we actually are working with a vendor right now that might be lower, but it's not to our, to our scope of work. Soon as it is the scope of work, he's, he's, the company's resubmitting it.
And that costs, although it may be recovered from insurance, but it's coming out of the CRA as well?
No, no, it it'll just come out of the general fund, but it will be a reimbursable, because it's actually going to be reimbursed by a third party, which is the insurance company. We we hope. Nothing's guaranteed in the world.
Okay. First the wall, second the lighting, and third, we'll talk about the the requirements. Is the town in receipt of the Persian Responsible's property damage insurance policy?
We we have sent this all to our insurance company, so they're going to sub brigade for for the damages. So there, there is a couple of issues, but you know, there's always issues with insurance. So we're going to try to work out and get, trying to get 100% back.
Hopefully, this isn't the person with the state minimum $10,000. While we're on the topic, very important for residents to just look to see what's in your policy. Florida is actually the only one that does not require bodily injury. So
You can be civilly, civilly liable if you do not have enough coverage. I'm acting like the attorney today. So Charlie, am I correct?
Just the information provided is just information.
This is just information. I'm going to talk to you about this particular case, but you can be civilly liable if you don't have enough coverage and you do damage.
Yeah.
Somebody drove through that wall.
Make sure no one ever, you know, many of us kind of have a nice relationship with insurance, or you just kind of pay because you need it. Just look to make sure that you actually see it and understand it, what's in there. If you don't understand it, talk to your agent, and I'm sure that they can explain it. So yeah, I do see several proposals. Yeah, I do see, uh, several proposals. One here is, uh, the, the, via month of construction gives us two different options. And, and is this the reason why that wall is kinda taking a little bit longer to put up just for clarity and transparency?
Yeah, as you can see, the dates, we just got these. Um, we, we've just been getting them lately. Uh, we, like I said, we've been reaching out and reaching out and not getting it a bit.
Got it. Uh, and, and in terms of the lighting, so I understand it to be correct now that the GC, the general contractor currently does not have a lighting component in their bid.
Not at all.
Okay. And what is the difference, and now going on to the third thing, what is the difference between the formalized sealed bid versus this, uh, more informal type of lax bid? Is this taking away, uh, are we being locked into anything? Uh, do we have fewer choices or more choices?
If, it, it actually gives you more flexibility not having a sealed bid, uh, and it's more onerous, it's less onerous on the bidder. So it's a lot less, nobody, people don't even want to work anymore companies. They're picking their projects. So you, you, you don't want to create extra. It's most bidding documents on a government is 30 pages at least. It's unfortunate. So you have to read those 30, you have to present references. You have to list all these things. Of course, we're gonna ask for, anyone who does this wall, we're gonna, um, a certificate of insurance and, and licensing. But they don't have to go through that, you know, people don't even, they don't, there's things called bid bonds and bid securities. There's, that makes the whole world very complicated and they don't want to go into the bidding world, the sealed bidding process. So they, they just, for these kinda items that are under 50, um, and, and that doesn't mean if I think it still might be beneficial to go out to bid, I can still do it for a sealed bid if, if it's a, a particular purchase, but $10,000 is just too low.
When was the last time that, that, um, procedure was updated here from the town council? Because I know that in the past two years, inflation has been like nine percent.
Oh, it's, it's, it's many years, but I don't know.
I, I can't recall.
Long time.
Long time ago, so.
Very long time.
Would you say that it's a time for us to kind of update?
Very much.
It, it's, the, the number's too low.
I just want to be well informed here that, that this is.
The big problem you have is that you're going to have less involvement, less people bidding if they've got to go through the formal process, which requires a lot of effort on their part and a lot of their time. If you're simply getting quotes, it's a lot less effort and more people are inclined to give you a quote.
So I would like to make the motion.
Versus 40 pages.
I understand. I would like to make the motion that, uh, solely on the lighting proposal for the pickleball court and for the damaged wall on Arabian Road that we suspend for these two, um, projects, the requirement to have sealed bids, uh, for the limited purpose of the Arabian Wall and the pickleball court lighting system.
May I add one word, a couple of words, um, because you deem it not to be advantageous to the town. That's in our policy.
Okay. And so I would like to incorporate Mr. Labella's, uh, verbiage that we have, I have found in this motion uh, that it would not be advantageous, advantageous to this town, um, otherwise.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fairly legally sufficient motion?
Yes.
Chair will entertain a second.
I do have a follow-up question, if that's okay, before I make, uh, a second or, uh, for, for the discussion. Joe, just for the record, when it is 10,000 or 50,000 or whatever the number is moving forward for any project, it comes before this council and we know where the money's being spent, where it's going, what the project is, all the details and the whole deal. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's in the budget. Um, so if it's in the budget, obviously then we can spend up to 50. We just do our due diligence. But it's after 50, we'd have to go out to bid. Like, like the Pine Tree Bridge, obviously you have to go out to bid on something like that.
And, and that question was really purely, um, for everyone here at the community, just so we understand from a transparency standpoint.
Yes.
Uh, what's being done, when it's being done, how it's being done. I think that's very important.
Before you second that, I'd like to add and to that motion that it's $50,000 because I did leave that out. So we'll go up to $50,000.
That'd be fine. That's fine.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion against the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you so much.
Anything else, Mr. Labella, under your report?
No, thank you.
Mr. Maples.
Yes. Well, guys, thank you for showing up tonight and sharing your concerns and your care for this town night in and night out. You guys come and you speak to us and you let us know what you're thinking. So I appreciate that. In, in good news and hopefully no objection from this council, I'd like to begin to work with Joe and the, and the town on our Lake Clark Shore Senior Club. I'm pretty excited about it, although I'm not near that age yet. But one day I'll get invited maybe and be a part of that community. Uh, so got some ideas, work with some of the neighbors and doing maybe a once a month, starting in the fall, coming up with some days and some folks who maybe want to be involved in that. So if no objection from this council, I like the opportunity to work with Joe and see if we can start up our Lake Clark Shore Senior Club. Maybe have some fun there.
The motion.
I don't think it needs a motion. I just think it, you know, that's something you have to do with Mr. Labella and bring it back for council. Let us know who's on first.
Okay, that's perfect. So we'll work.
Did good.
We'll work on that.
Okay.
Um, I know in the past, I know there's been some talk, I mentioned, um, you know, folks needing help with, uh, we talked about code enforcement, a lot of that was a conversation this evening and talking about seniors, we've got some folks that may struggle or may be on a fixed income that may be a challenge. So, um, I know some folks have reached out and said, hey, they're willing to be a part of what that looks like. And so maybe, I know, I know, Joe, maybe this council can't have any involvement or this town, but, uh, from a liability standpoint, according to Mr. Scheck, wouldn't be very good, but, uh, I don't know if we can maybe do something offline. So that, that's a thought and I don't know what that looks like. So maybe I have to have a little further conversation with you offline.
You do.
Here in this moment, but I know that's been the talk. And so I'd love to further that discussion with you offline and see if you can.
I'm, I'm here to help anybody. So if anyone needs help, I'm here to help, but, but obviously I know what I can and cannot do.
Right. So we don't want to put the town at risk, obviously, but we definitely want to be a community and help one another. So I think that's important. Um, lastly, as I stated before, uh, excited to, you know, get the chance to work with, uh, on the consent agenda. Increment LLP, our advocate, um, our lobbyist, rather, um, we were renewing that contract for a year, excited to get, work with him for a year. But obviously moving forward, I would like to see us, uh, consider putting that out for bid, uh, go through that process. Not that we'd be changing anything, but just to see what's available in the marketplace. So I think that's prudent and, and the right thing to do. But excited to get the chance to work with him, uh, this year. I know he's gonna do extraordinarily well for this town. So excited to get the chance to work with him. But that's all my council comments I have. Looking forward to continue to work with you guys and build in this community and make it better. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Maples, Mr. Gonzalez.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I, I just wanted to mention Judge Ron Alvarez again. Um, during COVID, I had mediation, uh, in front of him. Even though during mediation, you're not in front of somebody, but, um, you know, he was always somebody that was extremely kind, always available and, um, willing to chat and, and willing to teach. Uh, I was lucky enough to attend his retirement ceremony and then later on, um, worked with him in various mediations. He was a mediator, uh, towards the end and, um, I just hope that, uh, he rests in peace and that his family finds closure and, um, and that stuff. I just, I, I've really kinda speechless when I heard the news today. So. It was brought to my attention that there have been some, uh, extremely large trucks, trailers, uh, doing some pipe refitting on Palm and Clark Road. Uh, that has been causing some issues. That is not something, and I just want to be very clear, that's not something that Lake Clark Shores is, uh, involved in. That's Palm Springs. I'm not sure, Joe, if you got any kinda wind of that, uh, but I guess some folks, uh, some residents had a, some flooding or whatnot in their bathrooms and, so if, if that does happen, if you do hear of that, that is a Palm Springs, uh, utilities, uh, issue. So, um, we talked about a lot of things today and I, I want to appreciate and thank, uh, everybody for, uh, having an open mind. Couple of things were, were said this evening and then I want to make sure, at least, uh, with respect to the police. You know, my, my stand with our police department is that if we're going to have a police department, it's something that we need to do well. Well, it's not something that we can kind of just, well, we can kinda have them at half speed. That creates a false sense of security. Nobody would want kind of, uh, a half-measured approach, um, to, to our police department, uh, enforcing our community. So I want to make sure that, that you folks, um, have the tools that you need to make sure that the job gets done. As far as, um, staff and raises, merit-based raises, um, it is extremely merited and warranted. Uh, and I, I wish that, again, I'll just use the open checkbook idea. I wish that we had a, a bigger checkbook, uh, to acknowledge all the hard work that you guys do. And, you know, please let's not forget that we've had record inflation, um, and, and staff got 5%, even though inflation was 9%, which means that there's an additional 4%.
They got 4% last year.
They got 4% last, so, uh, you know, I just, I, I just wanted it to be very, very clear how thankful we are for, for what you all do. And, and making our town, making our community work efficiently as best we can. Um, it's not perfect. But I know that you folks have your heart into it. Um, and so, you know, at least as from a resident standpoint, thank you very much. We talked about lawns and bees and, and all kinds of different things. And I think that that's important. And we actually have a neighbor, um, he's kinda your neighbor, uh, which would be just to the southeast of your home. Rodney Romano, and he has, uh, he has a, a, a small apiary there, um, which is fantastic. And, and I got the opportunity to go there with my four-year-old and, um, see what it's like to kind of do some light beekeeping. And, uh, and my son Frank was very, very excited about that. And I think it's a big benefit to have, um, folks that are involved. And I don't know what the scientific word is, but in, involved in beekeeping, uh, for our community, for our, for our fruit trees, mango trees, avocado trees. I know we've got a ton of that here in, in the neighborhood. So, um, thank you folks for, for attending. I'm looking forward to a lot of the events that we got coming up. And, um, again, just thank you. Oh, and, um, we are, will be attending the Florida League of Cities, uh, this week. So that's, uh, that's an opportunity to hear kinda what the latest and greatest is, um, from a statewide perspective, uh, Florida League of Cities, if you folks are, are aware, I know that we talk about it quite frequently. But they're essentially, uh, a, a large, would you call it a lobby organization?
Florida League of Cities.
That's part of it.
Uh, that's part of, that's part of what they do and, and, um, that's to ensure that our voices don't become muted when we talk about Tallahassee. And kinda the motto is local voices, local choices. I thought we were just gonna get more, uh, class participation there. Sorry. At any rate, I'll stop talking. Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful night.
The, uh, I just have a few, uh, words to say and, uh, yeah, I've known, uh, Ron Alvarez for close to 40 years. And I remember when he used to go around being Chico Claus at the holiday, at the Christmas, uh, holiday, uh, get-togethers for the Palm Beach County Bar Association. Chico Claus, because obviously he comes from a, uh, uh, Spanish background. May his memory be eternal, along with Art Pompey, and great lawyer, great workman's compensation, um, judge also. So our, uh, our thoughts and prayers go out to, uh, both of their families. I know Elaine, um, I've known Elaine for, uh, too many years and, um, our thoughts and prayers are with them. Uh, a couple of things. There was, um, I think Fran Carlton came on up here last, uh, meeting and she was concerned about the, the wall entrance to Lake Clark and everybody's concerned about it. But when it happened about two or three months ago and, uh, we receive a bid July 25th, we receive a bid July 25th, we receive a bid July 24th from $19,000 in excess of $33,000. So it's not something that you can pick up the phone and call your guy and tell the guy to come on over and take care of it. And I think you're, you're gonna be surprised that there may be a limit with regard to the in, insurance. But there also should be personal, um, responsibility, uh, for the difference. So that's an issue I'm gonna leave to the lawyers. Then the, uh, and the town administrator, uh, because, um, I just dealing pots and pans. So they, um, we need to invest in the human capital. And I think if you go back and you think about the, we had this, uh, we had this conversation during the last budget meeting, not the last month, but the last year. We couldn't fill the, uh, we couldn't fill our, um, our job openings here in Lake Clark. Couldn't do it. Are we down? Chief, you down?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we are down. And of course, when you, when you talk about the infrastructure, it took 20 years for us to get where we're at today. And, um, it's kinda like defunding the police when you hear people talk that way, but.
All I'm trying to say is, you know, we need to invest in human capital. And, uh, I think that's the, uh, that, that was my conversation I had with Dan Clark. And, um, because it's priceless, look what we, look at the, the, uh, self-motivation that all of our, uh, our employees have. I think that's great. And how long they've been here, I think is a, a testimony to the, uh, to, to the town and their commitment to this town. I look forward to everybody having to sit down with, uh, Mr. Labella and, uh, vet the issue with regard to the special magistrate. Because I think you're, you're going to be, uh, enlightened, um, far beyond those thoughts that you heard tonight. And, um, I think that, uh, it needs, uh, more conversation. And, um, I think that's, uh, oh. Bill Murphy. Ladies, if, and gentlemen, I, i- if I can just, uh, exert some executive privilege, will you please join me in wishing Mr. Murphy happy birthday?
It's a big one. It's 50.
Mr. Shahou, since it's 50, would you like to sing?
Yeah.
Goes off 30 years.
God bless, uh, Bill. And I tell you what, he's been one of my best friends for, uh, ever since I moved into town. So I mean to tell you, uh, God grants you many more years, my friend. Just stay healthy for all of us and for the town. Hearing nothing? Anything else on, online, offline? We're good to go?
We're good.
We're good.
We did good. Let it be written, let it be done. Thank you everybody for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Done.